I'd like to call this meeting to order. Call of attendance. You need a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a motion that I would like to add an item for discussion. I would like to add the Administrative Task Force for discussion.
Any discussion? We don't have that in front of us to discuss.
We will be discussing the premise of the focus of the report.
We have a motion to amend the agenda to add the task force discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose? We'll add that.
I believe it will be nine E.
Nine E. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda. And on this agenda, we are approving donations from the community for $6,400, all of which are greatly appreciated. They all further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the leaders.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have some presentations and some recognition tonight? We'll start with our MAF update. Julie. This is Julie Bixby.
Thank you, everyone. Little intimidated following the high school swim girls. They had their speeches typed up. I have notes on tonight's menu from the restaurant. So, thank you for making me look bad. My name is Julie Bixby, and I am here on behalf of MAF. I am the Vice President on the Board of Trustees for the Madamida Area Educational Foundation. I'm also here as a parent. And what I'm here to do is just update you on where we are to date with MAF and also thank each and every one of you for your contributions to the school board and to our district and also for the great partnership that we share with MAF. We are celebrating our 30th year this year with MAF. Each year that I've been part of this organization, I've been extremely proud of our accomplishments. This year, to date alone, we've distributed almost $80,000 in teacher grants, almost $3,500 in Oliver's Fund grants, $14,000 in sponsorships, which has helped fund the increased need in basic needs that our school district has seen with certain student population, also with student development and opportunities. And next week, we will award almost $49,000 in student scholarships. So, a lot going on at MAF every year. This year is no exception. We just celebrated Legacy Night, where we had a very successful year again. Again, great contributions from our community as far as sponsors and then also just great community involvement. It was a great event, and we raised a lot of money, which in turn will be put right back into the school district. So, one thing I wanted to share with you really quickly is our funding need this year. So, each year at Legacy Night, we choose one thing that we work very closely with the district on, and we work with Dr. Larson, Lynn Veeker, and then the principals as well, to kind of figure out if there's kind of a greater need, things that we could help out that maybe the district doesn't have the funding for. And so, things like the Fab Lab have come into play before. And so, this year, we were very, very excited. This came from an original teacher grant for a need to update our media centers at OH, at the middle school and the high school. And it's definitely more than updating with furniture. It's more about teaching our kids to collaborate and learn in the ways that they're going to in the workforce. You know, we are looking at different office environments than we were, you know, when we probably all were working, much more collaborative office spaces. And so, there's been other districts around the Twin Cities that have done this, and I think our time is now. And so, we had a great group from the high school put together an awesome video that we showed at the Legacy Night, so I wanted to share that with you guys this evening.
We are your 21st century learners. We don't know a world without the internet.
We study at coffee shops. We carry around laptops and phones and earbuds. We are constantly connected.
We need a space. For collaboration.
For quiet.
For creativity.
For relaxation.
For research.
For independence.
For teaching.
With access.
We need a space that promotes friendship.
And inclusion.
And suffer pride.
The time is now.
So pump up your paddles.
Let's do this!
For us!
And for us!
And for us!
And for us!
And for us!
Again, thank you to the high school media para who put this together, did all the details, coordinating everything. We had a couple residents help as well, and it just was an awesome way to show a need that we have in our district and wanted to share that with you tonight. So, again, thank you from MAF for your continued partnership and support, and I appreciate the time I had. Thanks.
I bet you'll still accept contributions for the space, right?
Mafgives.org is where you can still donate.
Just in case anybody's feeling really generous, please do it. We do have some student-staff recognition tonight as well. Mark, Career Skills Day.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's always a highlight of the evening to see some of the great things that our students and staff are doing. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Nikki Locke to come to the podium and the board members to come on out front here.
In February, some students from Madamida High School and the Transition Program had the opportunity to compete in Career Skills Day. At that event, put on by the Washington County C-TIC, they had the opportunity to compete and demonstrate their skills in the area of interviewing, filling out job applications, and then demonstrating general knowledge in the area of job-seeking and job-keeping. Close to 180 students competed, and Madamida students represented themselves in our district very well. So, we have students here tonight to represent our group, and I'd like to acknowledge all of the students who participated by name. So, those student participants are Matt Bjork, Jeremiah Cooper, Jacob Hart, James Hart, Alyssa Jelsa, Mitch Jelsa, Margot Iverson, Bailey Nash, Blake Rucker, Nathan Sturzinger, Mitch Stockman, Susie Stone, Drew Teppen, Nick Thorood, and Nick Johansson.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks.
This spring, we had students apply and also get accepted to the Project Search Program. The Project Search Program is designed for individuals with disabilities for competitive integrated employment opportunities for their last year of education. And so, it is an application, a very rigorous application, an interview, and then also a skills assessment. We had three applicants who got accepted for their final year, and it is, so next year, they will have the opportunity for an internship either at Gillette Children's Hospital and then also at the State Capitol. And so, our three applicants for acceptance were Nathan Sturzinger at the Capitol, Nick Johansson at the Capitol, and then also Chad Bracewell at Gillette Children's Hospital. So, we're very excited for this opportunity for them.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Larson, it's a pleasure of mine. I get, one of the best parts of my job is to recognize great middle school kids. And tonight, we have, I would like to recognize two middle school students who participated in the American Choral Directors Minnesota Choir, Honors Choir this past weekend. I can't carry a note. You don't want to hear me sing, so I asked Ms. Consimius if she could tell me what exactly these two students went through. And if I could have Corinne Smith and Emily Trudeau. Emily could not make it, so I'll have Corinne stand right here. The American Choral Directors Association Minnesota sponsors state honor choirs each year for students in grades four through 10. Corinne and Emily auditioned for the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade honor choir and were selected to be part of 150 voice choir from over 500 auditions. They rehearsed all day last week on May 5th, on Saturday, correct?
Yeah.
And presented a concert at St. Andrews here in Madamida that evening, including a commissioned piece for this girls' honor choir, which they presented the world premiere performance. Ms. Consimius says, "I am so proud of their courage to audition and representing us at Madamida as well as the state honor choir event." Thank you and congratulations.
It's a symbol of something that welcomes students. It implores students to come to the schoolhouse door and participate in the learning. The ringing of the bell tells the students and the whole community that school is about to begin. Emma has served on the school board as our school board representative this past year. During that time, she has offered insight and ideas about the school district and has conveyed for the board a perspective of what the high school student experience is all about. Emma is leaving us because next year, she will be the Student Leadership Council President. And she's a junior, so will be a senior there next year. One anecdote that sticks out in my mind about Emma is her leadership and the leadership role that she took in the National Student Walkout Day. That was April 20th. She and several students planned for the event and made sure that the walkout was well-organized and safe. They worked with administration and law enforcement to ensure those things. When she and the students returned to school, there was something of a counterdemonstration, and Emma and her group held firm with their chant of, "This is what democracy looks like." And it is what democracy looks like. Energized people wanting to have their voices heard. It's about people working to make a difference. In short, it's people like Emma. Thank you for your work on the board, and congratulations on being president.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ray Kirch to come to the podium, please. Ray graduated from McFarland High School in Wisconsin, went to Eau Claire where he earned a Bachelor of Arts in English, and he went to River Falls and earned his Guidance and Counseling degree, and then his Administrative Degree from the University of St. Thomas. These experiences from classroom teaching, coaching, helping to guide and counsel students and become an administrator have served him well over the years. He is ending a 28-year career as an Activities Director. He's been at McFarland, at Blaine, at Watertown Mayor, and at Oseo. In the last 22 years, he was at Oseo Senior High as the Activities Director before retiring. Madamida was able to lure him out of retirement, and he was here for the past three years, and we were lucky to have him. During this time, Ray brought stability to the Activities Department and helped move the department forward with the essential but non-glamorous things like adjusting fees, creating handbooks, codes of conduct, and more. And these accomplishments are important, but the work he's done with coaches and boosters is even better. Ray is an excellent communicator and very student-centered. He has integrity and patience. His follow-through and work ethic speak to his dedication. Colleagues have said about him, "Ray has been a positive influence on Madamida athletics and the community of Madamida as a whole. His organization and leadership has helped to maintain Madamida athletics as a top-notch program that our community can brag about." In addition, with Ray's experience, knowledge, and statewide activities network, he's been a gift, and in the three years Ray has been here, he's hired 21 head coaches during the tenure at Madamida High School. And he recently told me, "In three years here, I've worked with some incredible students and amazing professionals. It would not trade this exclamation point to my career for anything." Ray, thank you for all the work that you've done here. Ask Mr. Hamery to come forward here. Mark graduated from Morehead State with a Bachelor of Science, and he graduated magna cum laude. He was on the varsity baseball team for four years and captain of his senior year. He started teaching in Lake City, teaching ninth-grade civics, moved to Hill Murray for five years, and came to Madamida as the Guidance Counselor. He was with us for 10 years, and then he was recruited by Eastview High School to begin their guidance program, and he started that from the ground up. His leadership abilities were evident at Eastview, and he went from there to be an Assistant Principal at Stillwater High, then Principal at Lily Lake, and then Madamida was lucky enough to have him back here. And for the last 11 years, he has served as the leader of Wildwood Elementary. A former colleague said, "You will find Mark to be a positive leader of the highest professional standards and a real asset to your school district." Another colleague wrote, "Few people have had the capacity to consistently, patiently, and ethically demonstrate an unfailing resolve to serve children and support those who educate and care for them. Mark is such a person and an educational leader." Another colleague wrote, "Mark is a great example of a caring educator and administrator. He goes above and beyond for what is best for kids. He has been a great colleague and someone I knew who I could go to for a straight answer when needed. His leadership and care for students will be missed." In Mark's application letter here to be a principal, he wrote this, "My goal as an administrator is to inspire the staff to create an environment that promotes excellence for all students, values students as an individual, and inspires them to develop their academic, social, and emotional skills to their optimum levels." To that, I would say, "Mark, thank you for all your work these last several years, and congratulations on reaching the goals that you set for yourself in your application letter." Thank you. Now, we have Beth Sneedon. Beth graduated from Marion High School in Marion, Michigan, then went to Michigan State University, where she earned a Bachelor of Art in Special Education. Beth has worked in the private sector, institutional settings, and working with abused children. And then she went to the public sector, working at Forest Lake with students that were emotionally or behaviorally challenged. She's done that at Wildwood, OH Anderson, and the Madamida Middle School. Beth completed her Master's in Elementary Counseling and served as an EVD teacher and counselor at OH Anderson before moving to fourth grade. Her job history speaks to her leadership abilities, as Beth was instrumental in starting the Q-COM program, Positive Peers, and Positive Peers. Beth was the first coordinator for Madamida Compensation Plan and set the precedence for its implementations. As a passionate advocate for helping teachers improve their craft, Beth has been the Staff Development Coordinator and was a Special Education Director Title I Coordinator, and she's culminated in her last position here as the Director of Support Services. Here's what colleagues have said about Beth. "Always kind and always working for the good of students. She has a gift of asking the hard questions without being confrontational." Another wrote, "Beth is a calming presence on our administrative staff and in our Special Education Department district-wide. She is a student-centered leader whose knowledge and expertise has been instrumental in working through some very contentious issues. We will miss her guidance and humor. I'm going to miss Beth, working with her. She's been an amazing colleague." Some other little-known facts about Beth, though, is that she was in her high school's National Honor Society. She was a finalist in state track, and she was the homecoming queen. On a personal note, "I have always valued your wisdom and the ability to help me think of things in different ways and have relied on your friendship and your wise counsel." Thank you for all you've done here.
I want to come up. I wish I had prepared remarks like Mark did for all of those, and I don't. I don't know what he did in high school. I don't know where he went to college. All of that sort of escapes me over these many years that he's been with us. He came to us in 2009 as an Assistant Superintendent, November, I think, and by May, he was our Superintendent. We have been well blessed and immensely privileged to have him all of these years. Under his leadership, we have done tremendous things. We have, you know, the U.S. News Report gives us best high school. We have Blue Ribbon Schools. We use data to measure things. There is a time, in my experience, that our curriculum review is in boxes under someone's desk. I won't say whose desk that was, but we have changed so much under his leadership. We'll miss him tremendously. The best thing that I've loved about him is he's never in his office. He is in the schools. He knows the people. He knows the kids. The best part of his day, I'm sure, is when he's not in his office. And to me, that is a real leader. And I have appreciated it, and I'm thrilled that he is finding his next step that he wants to do, but I'm heartsick that he's going. And I do have a bell for you, for whatever you're going to do with it.
Congratulations.
Following all of that, we have our Early Childhood Special Education Calm Camp Project.
Thank you, Dr. Larson, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're very fortunate to have with us this evening two of our early childhood educators. Lisa Giuliani, who is our occupational therapist for our Birth to Five program, and then Brittany Weber, who just presently got married. It's still, not sure what the married name is. Forgot to ask. But Brittany is our speech and language clinician for our early childhood program. As you're aware, our early childhood program has really grown in the last three to five years. We have gone from half-day service to full-day, five-day-a-week, full-day, three-day-a-week, half-days, three-day-a-week, half-days, two-days-a-week. So, with that growth, we've also had to figure out, as a special education staff, how do we provide service in the best way without stretching and burning out our staff? And we have been very fortunate, under the leadership of our team, to really look at, how can we build capacity? And when I say that, I mean, how do we extend the skills that special education staff have that we can also teach to paraprofessionals in regular education classrooms? So, to start that process, a couple years ago, Lisa created information sheets, and what they provided were tips that parents and classroom teachers could use to work with students in the classroom. And then from there, feeling ambitious, Lisa then developed task boxes in which paraprofessionals could take when they had some downtime with students and use to reinforce and enhance the instruction that they had received from certified staff. So, what we were hoping to do is build skills, build strategies, and also make instruction consistent across the board. So, students were getting reinforced throughout their day, not only when they were with special education staff. And then this summer, Lisa and Brittany applied for summer writing time, and they have created a project called Camp Calm, which they're going to showcase for you tonight.
Thank you. Like Beth said, my name is Lisa Giuliani. I'm the occupational therapist for the Early Childhood Program.
And I'm Brittany Weber. I'm the speech therapist for the Early Childhood Program. And Beth did a really nice job of introducing it, but just for a little bit of background knowledge, this all started back last year when both Lisa and I were involved in SEED, which is Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity. And at the end of the year, we were supposed to do a project about anything that we had wanted. And so, being a part of special ed, my heart is really set on making sure that the rooms and the preschool environment is set up for all children with all needs. So, I went out and found a questionnaire to give to the paras, to the associates, the classroom teachers, to fill out just, it was titled, "Supporting All Kinds of Learners", and they just checked what they had in their classrooms and what they felt was in need. And the biggest need, which I'm sure you won't be surprised about hearing, is social, emotional, and behavioral needs, and how to support all students in that area. So, we decided to turn that into summer curriculum writing and combine kind of my speech and OT expertise to put together something great. And we wanted to be able to offer tools to all of our teachers and all of our students, not just kind of keep them to ourselves, share them with everybody in our preschool wing. And really, what we found was that the research supported using a lot of common language, using a common space, and using a lot of tools and visuals to support this area that we would create. So, quickly, so the language that kind of went into this little project tied really nicely with the responsive classroom that Wildwood is really awesomely using, and it talked a lot about proactive language and proactive teaching and redirection and reactive language. And one of our biggest goals was to be able to teach kids how they can calm their bodies to be able to get to that just-right space and mental frame to be able to play and learn at the best of their abilities. So, that was part of the name with Camp Calm, where that came from. We, again, we hope that kids could learn to calm their bodies independently and then be able to generalize this to other situations outside of the classroom or to other feelings they might be having. The space was simply just, we wanted to make sure it was concrete. They're preschoolers, so they need to see where they're going. So, all the preschool teachers have a little box in the room or canopy that's labeled Camp Calm, and so the kids know that that's where they can go to just kind of be back and not have a bunch of stimulation, a bunch of noise, and a bunch of toys all around them. They can just sit back in that space and just get their bodies just right. So, yes, you want to talk about the tools?
I can. I can. Just like Brittany said, we pooled together our expertise and our education, both pulling from speech and from occupational therapy, to help design a kit to provide developmentally appropriate tools and strategies for children to use, really wanting them to be able to take those times when their body engine's running really high and they might not fully be able to do what they needed to do in that moment without taking some time, give them a chance to head over to Camp Calm. And with that, there are different strategies and different self-regulation tools that we researched and put together, providing that kit for them and also for the teachers to use. We felt that this would be a great way to have common language, common visuals, and common tools in all the classrooms for all the kids to become familiar with and really start to build their skill set so that they could... But anyway, things that were very developmentally appropriate, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then you got to breathe out. There you go. But along with that, we have the materials. There's about 10 different objects in there with pictures that go along with it that the kids can help use to support their choices, as well as a social story that we designed to, again, help walk them through the process and how they can start managing some of their self-regulation, all with the goal of getting them back to that just-right feel so they can go out and play and learn to the best of their abilities. And so with that...
So we knew when we created this in the summertime, we had this box of tools, and we were super excited about it. But in order to make this successful, we needed to think a lot about the implementation. So we thought a lot about our staff and our preschool wing, and collaboration between the special ed staff and the general ed staff was huge, having that communication back and forth. We, during workshop weeks, Lisa and I took the time to bring in the kits for all of the teachers that we created for them and explain to them all of the tools, how to use them, why to use them, all of the backstories with it, kind of get them on board for what we were going to be doing. And then we went into the classrooms, all of the classrooms, for the first week of school, and we pre-taught the kids what this space would be used for, what it looks like when your body feels upset. It can be mad, sad, nervous, and the tools that they could be using to support them and get through those emotions. After that, really, we just were supporting the teachers by sending reminder emails and kind of just fine-tuning some things they had questions about. I will say that the success of this program, or of this project, has been huge, and it's all thanks to our teachers. They do a great job with that follow-through, and it's really supporting all students in the classroom. So really, to wrap it up, I would just say that our big goal going into this was, you know, we teach kiddos how to count, we teach kiddos how to spell their name, and how to write, and how to sing along to songs. So why wouldn't we teach them that everybody has these roller coasters of emotions, what they look like, what they feel like? We can name it, we can feel them, it's okay. What are strategies we can use to get through them and then move on? So, that's it. Thank you for letting us come in.
Questions for Brittany and Lisa?
Might comment that this would be a great roundtable presentation at the school board convention. Every year, we have presentations supported by the board at the roundtable, at the Minnesota School Board Association annual meeting. This would be a great idea to present at a roundtable next convention, perhaps.
It's a leadership conference they hold every January. So when are the applications? Are they like September, October?
October, November. Dr. Novak, do you remember when you submitted yours?
Late September.
Late September. You have a good memory. Thank you.
Lisa and Brittany also developed a program, PEAK, which I'm hoping will come back next fall or maybe winter to present. Right. And that's...
It ties in very nicely with this program, and we would love to come back.
And that's Deb Carlson that helped with that. The other piece that Brittany and Lisa didn't share was with this being developed in the early childhood program, now kindergarten is looking at it, so we're trying to transition the program upward with the students. So they have learned the skills in preschool. Next year, they'll have familiar techniques and strategies that they'll use as they go into kindergarten. So it's been really fun to watch it grow within the preschool program, but also extend up through the grades with the students as they progress. So I'm just really proud of the work that they have done, and as they said, it's had a huge impact for children. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other presentation we have tonight is about microsabbaticals.
If I could take a moment to get it set up, this is the Zephyr Ideas Project, and zip began in earnest in the 2017-18 school year. We'd been approached for inclusion in 2015-16 and 16-17, but it was cost prohibitive. In 2017-18, there was no charge in the technology support and the human-centered design workshop, and the cohort learning was all free of charge, and so we participated. Through a partnership with Optum, there are eight school districts that participate in using crowdsourced ideas to innovate. The districts were Austin, Becker, Cambridge-ISanti, Eden Prairie, Motamita, Minnetonka, Orono, and Stillwater. The cohort meets monthly, and usually Patrick, Cruthers, and I or and/or I attend. And the purpose of using crowdsourced ideas is that we asked staff to identify problems in small, medium, and large contexts. They submitted the website, their answers to these questions. What is the problem? Who has the problem? What's being done today? What's a possible solution, and why is it better? Then participants commented, they voted, and they resubmitted, and then we did what was called Pairwise, in which people would vote against these other ideas. And the idea was that we were hoping to have about 25% to 30% participation, and we actually had 40%. We had 23 different idea champions and 29 different ideas. And I very much believe that ideas can come from anywhere, but the frontline people have a unique insight that superintendents and oftentimes school board members don't. I trust and believe in the frontline staff to identify problems and offer solutions. We had six small ideas that we can implement this spring or next fall and make operational without much trouble. Some of these ideas include long-distance calling, sharing of best practices, welcoming students, creating a military wall, warning bells, and changing final schedules. All of these small ideas were things that ordinarily don't ordinarily come to the attention of boards or superintendent, but it speaks to the ability of the frontline staff to identify problems and solutions. The medium idea, the purpose of the presentation is the microsabbatical. And after the idea was selected, we went through a human-centered design process that has these elements. Empathize. Who are you solving for? Define. What are the needs? Ideate and prototype how you create solutions and test why the works matters or makes a difference. The next step is the lean prototype, and we have Gretchen Brunner and Karen Goff to share how they use the microsabbatical. So ladies, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Our whole of microsabbaticals started out with our math curriculum review. And at Wildwood, our math curriculum team started out with a book study on Smarter Together: Collaboration and Equity in the Elementary Math Classroom. Great things in here. We were talking about it, and our peer coach, Helen Ettinger, reached out to one of the authors of the book, who is Dr. Marcy Wood, who is a professor of mathematics instruction at the University of Arizona. Through that connection, we started Skyping her and saying, how can we start this in our own classrooms? We were connecting with her, emailing with her, trying things. It really built, and we decided, hey, let's write a MAFE grant to get her here for the workshop week 2018 to train our staff. Well, she got so excited about us being excited that she let us know, like, early April, hey, I have some budget money, I have some time, how about if I fly to Minnesota and come and see what you're doing? About the same time, the microsabbatical applications came out. So Karen Goff, kindergarten, myself, first grade, and Trish Howe, second grade, decided to write a microsabbatical to work on complex instruction and math education.
So complex instruction is a set of strategies in which students are working together in groups of two for kindergarten, or up to five students. And it's working on a task that is intellectually challenging for all students. So that means it has a very high ceiling, so kids can enter at different points, and a low floor. So it's very stimulating to everybody. It can also be, it's a task that can also be approached in a variety of ways so that kids can bring their own strengths to a problem. It is a task that cannot be solved without the participation of every member of the group. So not like your old kind of group projects in high school where one person did it and everybody else watched. Everybody else, everybody has to be involved. All students are responsible for their work in the group, that the group does together, and everybody has to understand the answer to the problem before the group is finished. Each student has a very defined role in the group, and although we were talking with Dr. Wood about math, and this was our math committee, and so we were working on math problems, it can really be used in any subject.
So how did we use our microsabbatical? The three of us were each given four days, and then we had one shared day. The first day was a day of planning and preparation for Dr. Wood's visit. We worked together, talked about what we were planning to teach and share our ideas of what had worked so far and what we needed help with. The next day was a shared day, well, the next day for Karen and I, that was a shared sub-day. Dr. Wood flew in, came and did a staff meeting, kind of introducing it, getting people energized for the fall. And then she observed each of us in our classrooms teaching that day, and we had the time to reflect immediately afterwards with her and with our peer coach about how we did with complex instruction, what she saw. She was very helpful, very good feedback, and to get that immediately and not have to say, okay, I'll talk to you in two weeks when we can set up an appointment. It was immediate feedback. The third day, we worked with Dr. Wood on building a progression of the complex instructions norms and student roles for K-2. We also worked on creating group-worthy tasks using our curriculum that we already have. How can we pull this idea of group work into what we already have? The next day, we met with the whole math committee and third grade, which was really great. Third grade heard about what we were doing, they sent a representative over to work with us because we want to bridge that K-2 to third through fifth. So we met and we planned the August professional development. Our final day, Dr. Woods went back to Arizona, and we each had a day to reflect and plan, and all of us worked on things that we could get tasks ready for our teams as we head into this in the fall.
So our key takeaways from this microsabbatical experience, first of all, we had the opportunity to work with an internationally known expert in the field of complex instruction. Dr. Wood's going to be speaking, is being paid to go speak in New Zealand coming up here in the spring. So we felt very honored to have her working with the three of us and our staff. And then you're going to notice a common theme on the last three. The time to prepare and reflect on the interactions that we had, the time to collaborate K through three, and the time to prepare sample tasks for each of our teams. Everybody on our team was given complex instruction tasks in hand so they can have them ready to try now in the spring or when Dr. Wood comes back in the fall. And then, going forward, I just want to mention some things. This kind of partnership that we've developed with Dr. Wood has not ended. She's going to be here in the fall for our workshop week to work with K through three teams. The third-grade teams will be coming to Wildwood to participate in our staff development. We also have the great possibility of presenting with Dr. Wood, co-presenting at the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Conference in San Diego next spring. And applications for that, we've already submitted, and we're hoping to maybe possibly apply for a Hanson Grant to cover some of those costs should the applications be accepted. And then also, we have the possibility of Dr. Wood returning with a video crew to actually to produce some nationally available videos for teacher preparation, highlighting our complex instruction work that's taking place at Wildwood. So I think I can speak for Gretchen and Trish that our microsabbatical provided us with a really rich experience that will benefit all of our K through two students in the coming years. Thank you.
Our student representative.
Good evening, everybody. There are 19 days left of the school year. 19. I know that's crazy, but there's still a lot that has to happen before the seniors graduate. Reflecting on a few events that have happened in the past few weeks, National Honor Society had the blood drive on April 30th, partnering with the Red Cross, and I know a lot of people gave blood, even though I couldn't, but a lot of people did, and that was amazing that someone can save up to three lives just by taking 30 minutes out of their day to go down into the gym, and you get free cookies and some juice in return. So Beauty and the Beast, the production of Beauty and the Beast occurred last weekend, and Luke was really great in it. And overall, it was a really fun show that we should be proud of, that the students of Motamita have such musical talent. AP testing started this week, which is a really stressful time for a lot of people, specifically in the high school, and it will continue into next week. Teacher Appreciation Day was on Tuesday, and I know that, I might be biased, but I'm going to say that Motamita has some of the best teachers in the world. I didn't always go to Motamita, and the teachers I experienced in my earlier education are nothing compared to the experience I've had in the Motamita School District. I can remember my teachers from fifth grade when I first moved here, my middle-school teachers, and now my high school teachers, and I'm so grateful to have, I think you guys are grateful too, to have such amazing teachers. So thank you for that. Prom is this weekend. It's going to be on the, it's on the St. Cray River. It's on a boat this year, so weather permitting. But Grand March is at 5:00 p.m. at the high school, if you want to see some fancy kids dressed up. It'll be pretty busy. A lot of parents go there and take pictures. And there's the ninth grade and symphonic band concert on May 14th at 7:30 p.m. There's the Pops Concert for the Choir on May 21st. I choreographed some of the songs, if you want to see some mediocre dancing. The singing's good, though. The singing's good. The Jazz Band Concert for the high school is on May 29th at 7:30. And then finally, we have graduation on June 9th. I just wanted to take a little time to say thank you so much for this experience. I know my goodbye is pretty bittersweet because, while it means that I'm going to be a senior, I'm stepping into a bigger leadership role next year. Having the opportunity to be a part of the school board has given me a newfound appreciation for local government, for you guys, for the personal relationships I've developed with all of you, and it's been an amazing opportunity that I think a lot of people would take for granted, but I'm so glad that I decided to join you guys. So thank you so much.
We enjoyed having you. [applause] Thank you, Emma. We need a motion to approve minutes, April 12th, 26th, special session and 26th study session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have some discussion items, including calendar of events that Emma just brought us right into. Do you want to highlight any other options?
On Tuesday, May 29th, is the teachers' union puts on a picnic for the community. That'll be at 5:00 p.m., and it's been at the high school. Outside weather permitting, it's always been a great event, so if you can attend that, everyone is welcome. And there are also a lot of programs, end-of-the-year things that are in the calendar of events thing, and they're also on the website.
I'd like to highlight next Thursday, the Hill Legacy Award. That is at, is it at 7:00?
Yes, at 6:30.
At Century? 6:30? Yes, 6:30. And here it says 7:00. So 6:30 for that, and then next week, also the scholarship night, and the scholarship night, and there's one other one. What is the other one? Okay. Let's just go with scholarship night. 7:00, next Wednesday.
Looking back and not forward, but on May 1st, we were scheduled to have a poverty simulator exercise with staff, and there was an illness, I believe, with one of the presenters. So we went and we moved. We were very nimble and flexible, and we moved to some equity circle work, and I was lucky enough to attend, and it was just a wonderful, it was a wonderful way of connecting with staff, and like I haven't done before. So it was a worthwhile thing, and hopefully, in the fall, Sarah Duzek can get the poverty simulator going again.
I want to highlight our first, I believe, Motamita Passages Program graduation. Is that our first, Dr. Novak? Did we have some graduate last year? So it'll be a new event for us, and I look forward and appreciate all the work that's being done in that program.
On what day is that, Lucy?
It's on the calendar for Wednesday, June 6th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. here at the District Ed Center. ed center. I'm getting knots that we're right.
All right. Our favorite topic, the levy update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Superintendent Larson, so many great comments tonight and recognitions. And then, as Board Chair Schwartz said, then you invite up the finance person. So I really set myself up for success every meeting here, it seems like. Included in your board packet, and then in part up on the screen, you do have a levy update. And I'd like to go through that tonight. For the sake of time, I will summarize some of the memo because you have seen much of the information previously, and I do want to go over in detail a few items as well. So, we started talking about the process at the February 22nd school board study session. Since that time, Springstead has been here to conduct a survey and present a survey to the school board. And then the school board has also reviewed budget parameters related to the potential levy ask. So, enclosed, you'll find two sets of documents, and both of them will be up on the screen here. The first one is an operating referendum timeline leading up to November. We'll summarize that in just a minute. And the second set of documents are three estimated tax impacts for possible referendum levies. Both of these items were requested at the last meeting on April 26th at the study session. So really, the purpose here tonight, in order to adopt a resolution calling for referendum election and related ballot language by the next meeting on May 24th, the school board needs to look at narrowing in on a levy dollar amount and tax impact scenario tonight. So the tiered scenarios are included in the board packet, and then I'm just going to summarize them briefly here on your levy sheet as well. So, Scenario 1 and 3, you've seen previously. So Scenario 1 is the $800,000 tiered approach. That tax impact on a $350,000 referendum market value home is $127, and it's a $220 increase per adjusted pupil unit. Scenario 2 is an $880,000 tiered increase, which is $140 tax impact on a $350,000 referendum market value home. And then Scenario 3 is the $1 million tiered increase, which is $159 tax impact on that same market value home. So as I mentioned previously, and I'm just, for the sake of understanding here, I'm going to call the $800,000 Scenario 1, the $880, we'll look at Scenario 2, the $1 million, Scenario 3. We've reviewed the $800 and the $1 million before, so Scenario 1 and 3. The $880 is new, and really, the rationale for that, it was recruited, included at the request of the board in order to align the levy ask with the recommendations from the Springstead survey, which you'll recall were between $135 and $140. So, $140, $880,000 scenario was within the Springstead recommendations if we were to go out for a levy. Turning now finally to the referendum dates, I got a little bit lost here with what's up on the sheet, but just like to call your attention to a couple of items, important items. So, August 24th, so that's the last day to adopt a resolution calling for referendum election. So our self-imposed deadline here has always been May 24th, in order to spend really what we're calling the 12 critical weeks in June, July, and August, outcommunicating the what and the why rather than determining the what and the why. So, the last day to adopt a resolution is August 24th. We've always talked about May 24th being, or excuse me, yeah, May 24th being our self-imposed deadline. September 21st, that's the first day absentee ballots must be available for the November election. Skipping down to October 16th, the last day to pre-register for the November election. And then I'm going to skip all the way down to the actual election date on November 6th. And then note that no public meetings or school events may be held between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, and we'll need to work with the activities department in order to make sure that we get that narrowed down. November 9th through the 16th canvassing period, and then finally, 15 days after canvassing, last day to notify the commissioner of the results of the election. So, again, this was a request at the previous study session. Just wanted to include it in your school board packet, and we will constantly reference back to the timeline as the deadlines approach. The tax impact, so the remainder, what's included in your board packet are really the details of Scenarios 1, 2, and 3. And so there's a whole lot of information on here. I won't go through all of them, and they're all very similar. So once you understand the first page, you really do understand Page 2 and 3. And they're noted in the top right there. You can see the top right where it has the $800,000 tax increase in revenue. And really, the yellow highlighted, so you can see the referendum market values all the way from $50,000 to $1 million. We're using the $350,000 referendum market value as our average home price in our taxing district. So you can see that under the $800,000 tiered scenario, under fiscal 2020, which is right here, the tax impact goes from $42890 up to $55649, which is an increase of the $127, which you saw on the summary page. Increase again in fiscal 2024 to $683, and then again in 2027 to $810. And then the corresponding referendum authority is up top here. So you can see that right now, we're at the $74374, which again, to reconcile between the $743 and the $1043, it's the $743 plus the 300 under-board-approved authority. So that would go from $743, an increase of $221, up to $965, and then $1185, and then finally at $1405. So, after the 10-year period, we would be at roughly $1405 for adjusted pupil unit, well below the state-approved cap as it sits today. And obviously, that's going to continue to increase as well. So, that's really the summary. And then, the second page and the third page are the summary of Scenarios 2 and 3. So, again, just to review, we started discussing this in February. We reviewed the Springstead results, which as I mentioned, they mentioned their survey. If the district was to go out for a levy, they recommended no higher of a tax increase on a $350,000 home than between $135 and $140. We've included for your review, one tax impact at $127 that's less, one tax impact that's $140, which is within their range, and then one tax impact at the $1 million at $159. So one that's less, one that's at the range, and then one that's over it. At this point, I really don't have other information to bring forward, just in terms of background information, unless there's something that the board would like to see. So, I'd like to turn back over to Chair Schwartz and just recommend that we have a discussion about narrowing in on a dollar amount. And I'll certainly be here if there are any questions.
Any comments or questions? Anybody?
Dr. Larson, what is your recommendation on these three scenarios?
The third one, Scenario number 3, the $159, that would get us, net us a lot of, over a million dollars. With that, we'd be able to add back some of the reductions that we're having. It would also cushion us for the future years. It is a more difficult ask, and it is higher than what the Springstead organization has recommended. But I think that the case can be very convincing that this is the right thing to do for three basic reasons. The first one is that it will help us reduce class sizes. Second thing, it will help improve school safety and student safety. And the third thing is it can also go toward deficit reduction. So to me, those are three compelling reasons. And it still puts us well below the cap. I believe the cap is $1,960?
$67.
And this would still put us well below that. So we are still doing much better on much less than a lot of our other neighboring districts.
Thank you. If we just went for the $127, we can't add back anything.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, just to provide some illustration on that. So, if we went for any of the scenarios, and it was to approve, the first year of the additional revenue would then be in 1920. So we're going into the 1819 year. The election would be in November. If it passed, the first year would be in 1920. At that point, you're talking about a new biennium from a funding year from the legislature, contract negotiations. Based on our projections, Scenario 1 at this point would be to maintain.
Other comments? It's just a discussion item tonight. We're not acting on it, so ask your questions or provide your.
Or ask for more information that.
That you might want.
The last levy that we went out for, I know in '13, when we were unsuccessful, we asked for significantly less. Did we, I forget where our number fell. Was that the amount we fell on from a Springstead survey last time? Do you have any knowledge of that?
I can speak to that. In 2013, Springstead had recommended $180, but that would have put us in a situation where we would have had to make continual budget cuts. The appetite for taxes at that time was worse. We went out for $330, and it did not pass. And then the board recognized the difficulty that $330 would have, and we went out for almost $600, and that did pass. And that was a very difficult campaign. But the case was made, and we did the same things, class sizes, safety.
But had we done a survey like this time with the '14?
No, we did not in 2014.
So we doubled the, so we just have no idea.
I wouldn't say we have no idea. I think we have a very good idea. I think that the.
But it doesn't make sense.
No. But if you make the case, and you have the compelling argument, and people will listen to that, and that's what happened.
So going over is not, well, it is a reason for concern because you never know how it will be received. Yes. You don't know. Yep.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Have you been in touch with Greg Abbott at MSBA for some of his thoughts? He's the, kind of the MSBA expert on levies, and he might provide some insights.
I have not.
Anybody else?
So our plan is to discuss these three scenarios, May 24th, and make a decision that night.
We have to decide by then, right?
In order to get out a lot of the communication related to the referendum in the summer issue of the globe, that would be the deadline.
We've been presenting the information for a long time now, but with many other things on the plate of the board, we have not really truly discussed where each of us falls. And with our agenda tonight, it's already getting late. So I would just ask that on the 24th, we have sufficient time to really talk through the numbers. And we were careful in putting that agenda together, so we've got that time and we're not feeling rushed. I'm not ready to really debate it or discuss it tonight so much, but I would be on the 24th. But I just want to make sure we've got that time to allow each board member to have an opportunity to, you know, talk out loud and work through and make a decision.
We'll plan accordingly.
Thank you.
Bill, do we have another finance meeting prior to the 24th?
June 14th is our next.
So not prior?
Not prior. Nope. The purpose on June 14th is to review the budget as a whole before it's approved by the board that night. So we do not have a meeting scheduled for the finance committee before June, or before May 24th. Nope.
Should we have a finance meeting before May 24th? Instead of, I mean, I think our May 24th schedule, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think that maybe a little more detail would be helpful for the discussion. Do you agree?
You know, good question. Side of the survey results, which we have, which recommend between $135 and $140, and I agree, there's always going to be that sliding scale. If your first number, in our case, was $125, that's going to have a higher approval rating. $150 is going to be in the middle. $175 is going to be on the low end. It's always going to go like this. It's just what number at the, I mean, if you start with 300, 350, and 400, you're going to have that same. And then, we've reviewed the board parameters, and so if there's additional detail, I'm happy to provide it. I just, at this point, I don't know what else you'd want me to provide. Yep.
Is there any additional detail somebody would like prior to that meeting? Because you certainly had quite a bit of detail.
I just, I think we have the information. I just don't think we've had the opportunity to discuss. And so, as we think about that, I wonder, though, if that enrollment committee meeting is, that is scheduled for May 24th, has an agenda that's higher priority than this, and maybe we should take that time and have some time just to discuss this as a board. And if we want input from the community members on that group, we'd have that opportunity.
Just more deeply to discuss.
Right. It would give us more time. As I said, I'm not sure what else is coming up on the agenda. I've not looked at the spreadsheet to know what's coming up. But I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to cancel the enrollment meeting and have a special board meeting before the meeting to, for budget. Because I think.
What's the enrollment committee agenda?
There's nothing I can think of, so.
I'd like to move that we cancel the enrollment meeting then and have a finance committee meeting. I'm not sure if we want finance or just a board, special meeting on budget. Before I make my motion, does anyone have any input?
Special meeting on budget, I think.
Okay. So my motion now is to cancel the enrollment meeting on May 24th and replace that with a special board meeting to discuss budget.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Budget or levy? Or it doesn't matter?
Budget and levy.
I think you can't talk one about the other.
Thank you.
Can we talk about money?
Money. That's the purpose of the meeting. Thank you. Funding recommendations for additional revenue. We don't usually talk about additional revenue.
I'm wondering, though, if we should table this item and the next item until that meeting. Well, this one especially due to the time. I'm looking at the time on the clock and how many more items we have to go this evening. We've put in a lot of hours this week on superintendent selection. I'm a little worn down. I know Lynn's put a lot of good work into this, and I don't want to negate that or anything. But I think in the order of time, I'd like to move that we table the next two items. This one, I would move to that meeting we just scheduled. And then the next one, I turn back to, you do need to figure out when. We would have more time, but I'm getting concerned about the time this evening.
You okay with that, Lynn?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. It needs a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you'll come back with additional revenue stuff on that early meeting on the 24th as part of the money discussion.
Look how prepared you'll be. You're ahead of schedule.
I'm looking forward to it.
It does, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your understanding. So the proposed curriculum reviews will move to June, I think it's, is it 8th? I think it's 14th? Okay. It's June 14th for that. And then, the funding recommendations of additional revenue will be May 24th at the special meeting at 5:30. Good. Thank you.
Do we have some action items? Approval of policy?
We added 9E.
That's right. Task force.
Administrative task force. Administrative task force report we received in, I believe we received it in March. And this document was intended to be a tool for our next superintendent, and we have not had time to discuss this in a current meeting. I'm concerned about how this document is being used at this time and interpreted, and so I would like to ask for some clarification on parameters of this document.
Any more clarification over there?
Well, I'm.
The task force was done, it was a large group, committee of people, to look at our administrative offices, our services, what services are provided in each building, you know, here, et cetera, as we were looking at, are we using it well? Are we the leanest we can be? And a lot of people did work on it, and we did get that presented to us at a meeting when we really had no time to discuss it. So, it's been sitting there. We did make an administrative change about not putting a principal at Wildwood based on some of that to be discussed later. But there, you know, there's some recommendations in there that we want to look at. So I think that's what you're referencing.
Yes.
It has not been back on the agenda, and I have to take some responsibility for that because the chair does help present with the superintendent in that we've had other things to be discussing, i.e. a new superintendent and the levy, and there's been some big items on our table. And I have felt, and maybe I should have discussed it further, that that restructuring is going to be up to the new superintendent. It isn't, this is not the time for us to be looking at how do we cut and paste the staff that we have, let the new superintendent come in based on her experience and her needs to really look at that. So it's been sitting there, you know, to do that because Dr. Larson, no matter what we say about it, he's not doing anything. He's gone. He's fishing.
Well, I want to clarify, he is doing things. He's working full-time. He's still, okay. I just want to clarify. I can't with it.
Restructuring, what's going on in all of our buildings, you know, it felt like we have other things to do as we move forward. So that's sort of why it was tabled, so. So it's been sitting there, you know, to do that because Dr. Larson, no matter what we say about it, he's not doing anything. He's gone. He's fishing.
Well, I want to clarify, he is doing things. He's working full-time. He's still... Okay, I just want to clarify. I can't with it.
Restructuring what's going on in
Yes.
all of our adminis, all of our buildings, you know, it felt like we have other things to do as we move forward. So that's sort of why it was tabled, so...
Right. So... Oh, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So the plan is to review that in depth and look at those recommendations and things come July, maybe through a treat or some later date. But it's just sitting there. We're not implementing anything because we've also had the retirement of an A.D., and so there's a process where I started for hiring A.D., and that I thought we were holding for the new superintendent, too. So now I'm confused about kind of where we are with all those pieces.
We need to let her get the lay of the land.
I, I agree, but then we've got some other timely pieces, but we've got processes like halfway started. We interviewed A.D. candidates today, but if we're holding on the whole administrative structures and we're not talking about it till July, are those applicants just going to sit till July? And so I'm just, I'm curious for clarification because I said in those interviews, kind of what we're thinking, and we should, you know, decide as a board, a few things that I don't think we can wait on any longer.
Right. So about hiring administrators and about changing, changing, changing titles that look like changing organization charts. And so, so are those things happening? And does the board want that to happen? That's my question, because I'm, I'm confused. I'm confused what the document is being used for, and I'm concerned. So this is not about one person. This is not about anything, but this is, this is about the process and the transparency of, of, of what the board asked for in our January meeting and what is perceived to be happening. So...
I think we need to figure out the A.D. position. I'm concerned, as I said, we've interviewed candidates. What we're going to do with that position, if we're going to hold that for the new superintendent or, or some input, that needs to be communicated to these applicants because they have interviewed now today and, and what is the plan. Any other pieces that have been implemented, I'm not sure what those would be and would, would want, you know, to, I don't know what they are, so I don't know even what to comment there, so... But should it go back to that administrative task force, you think? Or do you think we'll tackle it a little bit and, because we're a little unprepared tonight? I, I read the document after it was presented to us because we had a very short timeline, the way it was rolled out, but I haven't brushed up on it for this evening. Is it something we could add to the May twenty-fourth agenda to dive into and look at, make recommendations to keep, I want to keep things moving in the district. I don't want to stop and say, we're not going to do anything until we have a new superintendent on board. But at the same time, many of the decisions in that document will impact a new leadership structure and, you know, work. So I'm sort of torn on some of these things.
So having been one of the people that worked on the task force, my understanding of the work was to try to figure out many things, but one of them was to figure out where we were in comparison to some of our surrounding school districts and school districts that look like us, such as, an example would be Arnold. We didn't actually get any information from Arnold because at that point in time, they were having some issues there where they had to prioritize and we weren't it. So, but the, one of the, what I, what I heard from Superintendent Larson and what I've just heard from our chair was this idea of trying to let as much as possible the decisions that will be coming down for the, the new superintendent to let her, we now know, to, to let Barb be able to make some of those decisions for her team. That being said, the idea was that if there was a situation where we knew we could not hire, we would be late. So special ed comes to mind, and we went through that. Sounds like this A.D. thing is there as well. But those, those things that absolutely were time-sensitive, we were going to act on with a board person involved, is, was what I understood on that. And so it sounds like you did that today.
Well, go ahead, Huff.
So I guess what I'm interested in, is there something other than the special ed, the A.D., is there something else out there that's really super time-sensitive that we need to get on? We decided, I think, that the principal, and Lynn, thank you for your help on that, that the principal's position, again, we would wait for one year having Lynn go down there so that, again, the new superintendent could help assemble that team. So I'm, I'm curious at what, what else there is, but I mean, that document was supposed to be something that helped us affirm where we were. It was supposed to be a guiding document to help us, should we approve the levy, to inform our citizens what we're doing, where we currently are, and, and then, and then help the new superintendent. I mean, that was kind of the, the idea of this thing, so...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you get clarification? I thought I heard one person say we had agreed not to move forward on the A.D. position, and I think Kevin just said maybe we were. I don't really remember, so if someone could just remind me. And then was, is there other movement on other positions that I'm just missing?
Right. Are there, are there other position title changes that you would like to inform the board about or how the decisions were made?
Well, let's, let's back up to Stacy's question, if you don't mind. This, we agree the special ed director should be hired.
I, I remember that one, but we just mentioned the A.D. position.
At the point in time that decision was made, the A.D. had not retired, and so it was never discussed. But what was said is that no administrative positions would be done without board involvement. We were not involved in the special ed director hire. We received an email a couple days before interviews during work hours, and so obviously no one could make it. And so we were not involved in that special ed hire. The only reason I've been involved in, in the A.D. hires, I reached out to Nicole last week. They rearranged the entire schedule to make the interviews today, and I took the day off work so I could do those interviews because I felt it was important. But I don't know where we are in the process because we asked administration, direct administration, not to hire, but they could advertise. So they advertised position, and we didn't say this particular position. We just said all positions, I thought. And then so this was advertised, which, fine, but then to hear that, you know, the interviews, and, and they did include the board, and I appreciate that. Kathy was very, very good to work with on, on having that happen to accommodate my schedule. But now I'm concerned for these candidates because we've done all this work, and...
Your question really is, should we go ahead and make an offer?
Well, well, but there is the caveat. It always has to get approved by the board in the end anyway, so any candidate will...
You don't want to make an offer and have the board turn and say, no.
That's true, but I just want to say there is...
I don't want that to happen.
It's not the, there is still that final step, so that's always a piece of the equation. You don't want to...
Right. Right. The interview just today, recommendations are still, or, leisure recommendation, or reference calls are being done right now. I can't think of the term. Sorry.
My presentation, I was going to clarify a little bit about the Wildwood principal. Do you mind if I say that real quick?
At the microphone.
In the presentation, I was going to talk a little bit about the Wildwood principles that we were looking at until we had the revenue generated by, you know, eighteen students, but we also really monitor the first grade through fifth grade to make sure that the class sizes weren't tipping over, you know, too big. And the Wildwood staff has really expressed a strong, a strong interest in making sure that they want a Wildwood principal in the place there, but then they also understand, you know, that the time that, okay, we look at the class sizes, too. And I met with the first grade teachers because that, the first grade number was getting a little bit higher. So I talked to the first grade staff. They were great about it. They were saying, you know what, twenty-six in the class, we have done that before. We can do that. That, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a, a deal breaker and to stop on this. But then if we were to, and then I researched a little bit more about how many Montessori kids from kindergarten and St. Jude's and that to see, you know, what that number would be. So before we would hire the Wildwood principal, we'd want to make sure that those class sizes are at the, at the right level. So we'd constantly be monitoring that to make sure that we don't go ahead and hire and then not have the revenue to support, say, we, we need another teacher and that part of it. And then I can also address the concern about the special ed interviews. We were planning on having the special ed director interviews after spring break. We found out that a lot of other districts were having them two weeks earlier. So most of the candidates that we really wanted to bring in, we had to bring in, like, within the next three days, otherwise we would have lost them. You know, so we had some, like, three really solid candidates, and we wanted to make sure that we could get a special ed director in place. So that, I apologize for that, but it was because of the spring break during March time, and so it was a short notice. I think we notified the staff and everybody about three days before the interviews, and the candidates were so gracious, too, of coming in quickly like that. They knew this was crunch time to get people in place. And there are still districts without special ed directors, so I do appreciate that we could go ahead and do that.
I think, oh, go ahead.
Not to get us off topic, but when you say first grade class at twenty-six kids per class, how much is that over the metro average?
Um, I believe it was twenty-two point one. I have it on...
So four kids over?
That's the regional metro average, yeah.
And our, our, we want to stay close to the metro average.
That's the chart that I was going to talk about tonight, but...
So does that, and just to clarify, are you saying that we're reaching that number because kids are moving in and, and we have to consider whether we'll add a teacher?
Right.
This is not affecting the second and fifth grade decision that we already made?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Second and fifth are already in place. The fourth, we were getting more kids in the first grade right now for the bubble, and we just...
So right now we're at, we could be at twenty-six kids per class. The hope would be we would get another teacher?
If it got to be a lot higher.
Is there space for another teacher?
Yeah. We, we're going to go with two plans. We're going to have a plan to have the eight sections. Otherwise, we'll also do a plan to have nine sections if we needed to. And so that Wildwood team has been great to work with on this, this part, Mark Hamery. We've been kind of teaming together, and he's, he's just wonderful. And he realizes the difficult spot I would be put in, you know, having to do two jobs, basically, and moving into that Wildwood principal role. So he is doing a tremendous amount of work to get things ready, and I really appreciate that, and I wanted to, to share that, too, so...
All right, thank you.
So it appears that we have a lot of unresolved pieces around this because I think Julie's question, we haven't answered yet either. I'd like to make the motion that we table, well, not table, it's not, I guess, we put this on the agenda for the, the study session. We all read that recommended report because I think there's some misunderstandings, too, even around the Wildwood principal position. The board has never said, once we have a certain number of kids, we'd hire a principal. We've never said that, but somehow that's worked its way into the narrative. And so I think everything around this report is a little confused right now, and us tonight discussing all these things won't take us anywhere because we haven't reviewed that information recently. And so if we could all read that report, and then on the twenty-fourth have that be a focus of conversation, ask that anything related to that report at this point in time, does everything stop? Until we can address it, because as I said, we're not going to make any progress tonight. We're going to just keep going, well, I heard this, and I heard this, and... So I, I'm making a motion to table it. Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just have a question of point of clarity. So it sounds like there's been some things. Can that just get maybe addressed in board notes? We can all be up to speed on the same information.
I can speak to some of those things right now. It'd be unprecedented not to have an activities director, and I cannot stress strongly enough that we need to have one. And the longer we wait, the worse it gets, and the pool gets diminished. If we've replaced twenty-one head coaches in three years, that's a really large number, and there needs to be some attention to that. Additionally, it's very, very unusual for board members participate in interviews of things that are not superintendent or assistant superintendent-related. They approve, but they're not usually involved. So this is a very unusual step of micromanagement that's taking us down a road that I think we're going too far. And I think we want to spend more of our time in governance and policy and let administration do what they're supposed to be doing.
And so that is the concern that's being raised, is that practices aren't, are, are, are being, are being created. So that's the concern. It's about, it's about the practices, and, and there are concerns that actions are being taken that we have requested not.
We'll discuss that at the next meeting when we all had a chance to review the article.
We befuddled on to practices. We have openings where we fill them. We hire the best people available, and it's very important that we're able to get into a pool when the, when the pool is strong.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about pools.
I think we should hire the activities director.
And I don't think anyone said we shouldn't. It's just moved in such a fashion, going against what the board had asked before, I think is the concern. So if we could, I would like to call the question on the motion on the floor.
Repeat the motion?
That we stop all work on anything related to the administrative task force and that all board members read and study that report. On the twenty-fourth, it's an agenda item that we can actually discuss with knowledge from reading the report more recently. And Mike, a second of that. Stacy has some discussion, but I'm calling the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Point of clarification, I understand that we'll be discussing the report. Does that mean that administration is being prohibited from hiring quality candidates that we have? Is that the...
That's my question as well.
It wasn't clear in that motion.
The board made that a directive back in January, I thought. That's why I'm so confused, and that's why I'm asking...
No, no.
Some of us thought that was made in January. That's what's confusing.
Administration, oh, sorry.
Question on the, to discuss those, are we going to go ahead with our hiring of the candidates that have been interviewed to hire an activities director? Are we tabling that at the risk of losing the candidates?
So when, it was already made, but when the administrative task force began this work, we didn't know about the resignation of Ray. So I think there's where our cloudiness is. We just didn't know at the time. Then that came along and happened, and then we didn't have any, we didn't review it any further since that March meeting. So I am okay with if we've got a quality candidate for an A.D. and we risk not having a good one because we wait until July, I am okay with...
Are we going to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss voting on an athletic director hire?
I'm just, I'm just making a comment at this point. I'm not sure what it gains by waiting until the twenty-fourth, but, or until June fir, June eighth or the other dates.
Yes, question. Is there any other position that will be moved on before this next meeting?
There will be teachers that will move away, that will retire or resign, that we don't have listed yet, and we'll be replacing those.
But there's no other current interviewing?
And no titles have been changed? No one's been given it?
I believe you're speaking, you're, you're talking in reference to Lynn Beaker's position. Is that what we're talking about?
I'm not talking about a specific person here because I don't think that's appropriate.
What title are you talking about?
I, I don't think it's appropriate to discuss in an open meeting.
Oh, well, all right.
So, but I think we, we're still lacking direction to the administration on the A.D. position. I think out of respect to the administration, we need to resolve that.
I think so, too, and I support, I agree with Kevin. I think we should go ahead and hire. I don't think we need a motion for that. We don't vote on one.
I don't, I, I think it all revolves around miscommunication, it sounds like, in terms of what happened in January. Because we're so far along in the process, I would agree that we don't keep these candidates waiting. But I, I think the communication pieces we need to clarify as we work together as a board because different board members are walking away with different understandings of what's been said.
Just for clarity, it sounds like this is the only position, so we can move forward on it. There's nothing else out there that we're not aware of.
It, it's concerning to me because we had one building, we told one building, no, you can't hire principal. The board director was hired. We want to wait and have the new superintendent have input and all these other pieces. Another building has a retirement, and they're allowed to, well, they move forward. And so I'm concerned about the message it sends to our Wildwood teachers as well, that they don't get a principal, but then the high school does. I mean, there's all kinds of issues with the way this has been handled that we can't back up and fix. For where we are right now, I think we need to finish that piece, and hopefully strong communication will go to our Wildwood teachers so they understand there's been miscommunication, and, you know, we hope with the new superintendent coming on board, we can sort through all this pretty quickly.
There have been two listening sessions at Wildwood, in which staff was there and were able to hear from board members directly as to what they said and how they reiterated the meeting from that Thursday night.
So we're going to go ahead and hire the A.D.?
Well, the other piece, though, is we had said the new superintendent would have input. We are this close on the superintendent hire. Can it wait until she is able to have input? Or I believe Springs said, because of the Wildwood position, I believe Springs had told candidates they would have the opportunity to weigh in on these positions. So I'm a little concerned about now the communication there.
I think we should hire. We have good candidates we've interviewed. Do you have any consensus on this?
I'm fine with it. We should do it. I don't think we should be messing with it anyway.
Yeah, we don't hire this guy.
Nope.
I understand the concern about having the new superintendent. I think I, we don't know the timeline, and I don't want to hold it up too much. That would be my concern. So I would like for the new superintendent to have it. I don't know that it's realistic.
I can speak for all superintendents since that there is not a single one in the state that if they had an opportunity to hire someone, would not hire the absolute best person. There is absolutely no way that a superintendent would saddle an incoming superintendent with a crummy candidate. It's just not even in the realm of possibility. And we will go through our... And we will go through our procedures and process and hire the very best person we can.
I strongly believe that, the concern of the Board from January was that it's looking at the administrative structures, and are these the right structures? So I'm not criticizing the work of, of Umark or any of the other administration in the, in the system we have, because I trust them, I was with them today doing the interviews, very strong candidates, very good process and procedure, but I'm just trying to clarify what the Board had said in January and what has been shared with candidates. I think we have very good candidates, I think we have someone, should recommendations come in, that will be very good for our district, so I would like to move forward, but I'm just concerned about the communication.
So, move forward, move forward, move forward, move forward.
On Board issues, not administrative issues.
Hire the person, the best person. All right?
Yes.
All right. Approval of Policy 524, technologies.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is the third reading that we've had of this, we went over the changes at the last meeting, there were no objections or concerns about it, so recommend approval as presented.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the food service contract, Bill.
Good evening, this was presented for discussion. At the study session on April 26th, there were no comments from the last meeting, and so we're bringing this forward for approval tonight.
I move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Swimming.
This is going to sound very similar to the last agenda item. This was, this was included as a discussion item from the study session, there were two follow-up items, requests of administration at that time. One was to look at any three-year increase or average increases with the current contracts with Stillwater and North St. Paul School District. There, there are not contracts with North St. Paul and Stillwater School District, but there has not been a, an increase in the hourly rate. And then to look at potential cost sharing with the swimming program with the estimated additional investment of $8,000. Now, I have spoken with our Athletic and Activities Director, who has spoken with some of the swimming parents, as shared tonight to the public comment, the, the costs for transportation, which are currently being absorbed by many of the, the swimming parents, could potentially go down, and some of that money could potentially go towards that $8,000. Now, we haven't come up with a solid dollar amount, but we've talked in the neighborhood of $4,000 and $4,000 in that neighborhood, so. Those were the two follow-up items, so we've, we followed up on those, and then we would recommend for approval tonight.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I passed out sheets that show the difference, what a difference one second can make, which is way more difference would make if our kids had a chance to, to practice off the starting blocks.
Any additional discussion?
Well, I remember when the YMCA came to us to try to get us to join the consortium to use the facilities, and at that time, they came to us without the option of a dive well in their facility. And as a former swimmer, I said, well, that means if we use your facility and pull boots there, we're not competitive. Shortly thereafter, but I think we had made the decision not to go forward because of that and some other concerns, they changed their plans and added the dive well. And I wish they had come to us in the very beginning with the plans for a dive well. I don't, again, I don't know who was working with them on what you needed to be a performance pool for competitive swimming and diving, but the, the piece that is very compelling to me, the safety component, very compelling, the not having starting blocks, I, I can't even fathom it, I mean, back in 1974.
He was a swimmer.
I had diving blocks, and I know that that start, I mean, the coach always said, Donovan, your start's slow, and, anyway, brings back some fond memories, and I do smell a little chlorine in here, I don't know. But, you know, I just think that this is, you know, again, every dollar matters, but I just think this is a necessary thing to work on with our other couple items there, and I think we can do that.
I just want to say I support this, and I really appreciate the, the team coming forward. I thought all of those ladies were very articulate, and I'm very proud of our district when I see that kind of representation, so thank you.
Thanks for hanging around for this.
And they stayed this long. I'd like to call the question. All in favor of this motion approving this contract, please say aye.
Aye.
There you go, kids, go home and do your homework. I will, it's an action item, although we have selected a new superintendent, her name's Barbara Duffin, she is the Director of Education and Learning at Farmington, we are negotiating contract with her, and so we have to get all that done, but we will have, we had wonderful candidates, we had, it was a very difficult decision because we had so many good candidates that applied for the position, so it wasn't an easy fix, but we all came together on it, and this will be a great opportunity for our district.
So Madam Chair, the motion should be to, you recommend that the Board enter into negotiations with Barbara.
Is there a motion? Second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any committee report that somebody is dying to make? I'm just saying, you don't have to talk just to talk, but give them the time.
We're closing the meeting in just a few moments, but I do have a superintendent's report. It was requested by Board members that I provide an update as to the progress on the transition plan, so if I may, Madam Chair. The, one of the things that have been done, Minnesota School Boards Association is a very lengthy document in which they make recommendations as to what you should do, includes copies of current contracts, and those have been done, pending litigation and grievances, that's been done, relevant school district plans, most is frankly is on the World's Best Workforce website that you've done, and so that's really good. School Board members and contact information, easy to take care of, the school district leaders and contact information, done that for all of the people from administrative assistants, Alora, to the principals and special ed and business manager, all of those folks, including some of the more minor, or more, not as well recognized ones, from human rights officers, section 504 coordinator, Title I coordinator, and so on. Also provided information about the attorney and the firms that we work with, other district contacts, from food service to transportation to auditor to yearbook, and some of the external consultants that we've worked with, spent some time sharing the World's Best Workforce Plan, our crisis management plan, the school district organizational chart, and we've added comparable districts. We also have putting together the school staff development plan, school handbooks, calendars, teacher evaluation, principal evaluation, Q Comp, school district incident reporting system, that one will not be done until the end of the year, that's done on June 30th. The Minnesota Automated Reporting System, that's MARS, that will be done also at the end of the year. School Board committees, school Board election cycle, and school Board minutes, they're all on the website, and many of the superintendent candidates have already watched the school Board meetings, so they're very familiar with those. I have not gotten all of the audit reports done yet, they'll be done when we have the budget approved. Operating practices, the city leaders, we have a city leaders meeting tomorrow morning, the contact information for all the local mayors and city managers is being provided. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm providing that information. The existing levy information, bonds is also being provided, the information on the upcoming, the probable upcoming levy if the Board acts on May 24th, that will all be part of that. We've done some cohort work to date on personalized learning, leadership development, and innovation, that'll be provided, that has been provided, actually, the Zephyr Ideas Project and Innovation, that's part of it. Emergency closing and emergency announcement procedures, that wasn't part of MSBA's recommendation, but it really should be part of that, all that stuff's put together. And then so a lot of the information's already on the website, as I mentioned. Here's what remains to be done, I still have not done the school Board and individual member profiles, I have not done the review of electronic files and save these files according to records and retention schedule, that'll be accomplished in late June. The budget, once that's approved, it will move to the list, to the list that's been done, that'll be happening on June 14th. Enrollment projections, we've broken down into residents and open role, the activities director, communication specialist, and the summarization of reimagined Minnesota work, those are things that, that need to be done, and they'll be done in the next six weeks. So a lot of things have been done already, I've been in contact with Barb Dufflin on, on the telephone and emails, and very eager to help her transition smoothly.
Thank you.
I had one more thing that I needed. I was just recently added to the special ed email list, and I am not able to make a Monday, May 14th meeting from 4:00 to 5:30, is anyone able to do that?
I am not, I have a family duty.
4:00 to 5:00, are you there?
Yep. Here.
I could probably make it. Why don't I do it?
There you go.
Thank you. We get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
And this meeting is closed for discussion of labor negotiation strategies or developments in closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 113D.03, new superintendent contract negotiations. At the end of their discussion, the Board will open the meeting and then adjourn, so thank you. So we'll take a brief.
We'll take a recess in three, four minutes.